Being six oh three on March first, I'd like to call this executive session to order. Executive session, Matt Generalaw, Chapter thirty-eight, second twenty-one A, number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. Podcast LLC, if any open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position for the public body. And the chair so declares and to reconvene to open session to take any action necessary related to executive second item if needed into a hearing. I'd like to do a roll call.
Gene Vincent here.
Bill Fontaine.
John Smith.
Don Clay.
Alicia Dick here.
Ross Mansky.
Right now, we want to.
We're in executive session.
Executive session.
You make him score. Like a make a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Bill Fontaine, aye.
John Smith, aye.
Don Clay, aye.
Alicia Dick, aye.
Ross Smith, yeah.
Okay, now.
Yeah, at least they go there.
I do not anymore.
How come?
I know.
Okay, this is the rhythm.
All right, you ready?
Yeah.
All right, being seven o'clock on March first, I'd like to call up town planning board meeting to order. First up at seven o'clock, we have a public hearing continued, which is the Barton Center for Diabetes Education. The corporate campus facility site plan modification at one fifty Richardson's Corner Road. We have a review here from McClure Engineering. Also, we have in our packet, an email printed out from the zoning enforcement office of Blackwood, New Orleans. All right, do you want me to read this? Okay. From this morning?
It it may be useful.
Yeah, absolutely, I'll get on here. All right, I will read this email from the zoning enforcement office of the Midwestern Planning Board. During the review process, McClure Engineering's analysis adjusted that the most appropriate zoning category for the drop-in camp was an institutional and philanthropic use. Marked S P for special permit in the A or R sixty zone, section two hundred dash three point two B. Section three J of the zoning bylaw, McClure Engineering recommends that the applicant consult the zoning enforcement officer for the most appropriate use category for the project. McClure Engineering letter dated January third, twenty twenty-three, zoning law review item number one. As the zoning enforcement officer considering the bylaw as a whole, reviewing the use table and the information provided by the applicant inserted here. Proper use classification, after confirmed with Mr. Meskis, we consider the property as a section two hundred, three point two B, three A, public, private, secretarial, or dominational school nonprofit. While not a traditional school, as one may typically think, the mission statement of the owner, the Barton Center for Diabetes Education is to improve the lives of children with insulin-dependent diabetes through educational recreation support programs which inspire and empower. In addition to providing education to diabetic children, they are also learning facility for college neuro students to assist with all matters of care at the facility. Lastly, the Barton Center for Diabetes for Diabetes Education is a registered five oh one C three nonprofit organization. As such a use existing, if proposed, continues to be permitted in the agricultural zone by means of site plan approval. The Johnson camp is a public, private, secretarial, dominational school nonprofit under the zoning bylaw. Two hundred dash three point two B, three A marked with P for site plan is really approval, but schooling is generally conducted in the summer and the schooling is delivered to children and staff. The zoning bylaw, in all use cases, makes no difference between year-round, seasonal, or occasional activities. As an example, Fendel Pond Camping Conference Center, which operates nature spasms, operating year-round, located in A or R sixty zone, would be classified as public, private, secretarial, or dominational school nonprofit. After you see site plan approvals from the planning board for these facility operations. The project was determined to be pre-existing, non-performing uses, if we change a change, alteration, or extension, therefore require an action by the zoning board of appeals for determination of a change, alteration, or extension, or is no more detrimental to the neighborhood. If the zoning bylaw allows nonprofit schools in the A or R sixty zone, action by the zoning board of appeals is not needed. And it is the zoning enforcement officer's determination that the Johnson camp is a public, private, secretarial, or dominational school nonprofit is allowed in the A, R sixty zone with site owner review and approval by the planning board. However, the regulations classify a use for their purpose may factor into, however, does not govern zoning determination for the use classification for a property or a project. This officer has been advised that the camp camper cabins will not be heated, which then, under the building code, section four twenty-nine, under camp for children is a special unique. The Massachusetts provides reduced building code returns that otherwise could be considered a R two use group similar to a dormitory. Section four twenty-nine point three extension, if camps are heated, then the building shall conform to all applicable sections and specialized codes, which then would require full compliance with fire sprinkling in the buildings along with other advanced requirements. Email dated two fourteen twenty-three. This is a also part of this email was from the architect. Currently, I've decided not to use any camps, therefore remaining only a summer camp. I have confirmed that if not heated, we do not have to provide sprinklers, just the smoke and CO detectors for section four twenty-nine. By Steve Westman, Architect Elko's seat. Some good information there. And also the applicant's engineer has responses to McClure's McClure Engineering comments. Anyone have any comments or anything in the board? And then there's also responses from the applicant's engineer for response to the board of building department comments. Randy, do current have any input on the building separation?
Yes, I keep getting to that, but I think actually one of them still
Okay.
Got moved.
No problem. I just want to check with that before we go to feedback from the department within the town hall. Anyone have any comments or anything for the applicant's engineer to go over any modifications they made since the last time we met?
The chair, so the new information is that the architect has revised the buildings to be non-heated and that's been updated in this set of prints that we have submitted.
Yeah, again, did you comment on that? My understanding from the leak measure is that if they sprinkle a building, they need heat. If they put in heat, they need to sprinkle the building. So if you eliminate one, you eliminate the other. So I think that's how they resolve that problem.
I'll see the building layout in here, the architect's prints for the actual building itself.
It was actually submitted that the back meeting, it still have maybe too many thoughts in here.
I think I guess that's part of it, but but since then, they've revised it to not heat the camp.
But I think the building layout, right, and make the engineer can probably speak to that, but I think that the building layout has remained unchanged. Matter of whether it's
Yeah, that's a question, yeah. And just thinking about it, so the the site of the camps, has that been updated on on these prints in front of us? You know, they jumped in, I didn't want to interrupt any board.
Yeah, I guess that's a question.
Sure.
Yeah, we we updated, the plans you have in front of you have the revised building location. So we put you apart cabins A and B, provide separation, each cabin move about three feet away from the other. So that's reflected on the plans. The only other site plan change is designation of the handicap drop-off areas for cabins C and D. In compliance with the architectural access board, it's been ordered changed for the site and the architectural layout remains the same. The plans do still show fire protection piping to be put in. We are still planning on doing that, even though the great buildings don't need to be sprinkler. While doing all this work, it makes sense to do it now for a future use. Obviously, if that continues to change, it will have to come back to this board and any other board in town. But it's not 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 proposed now, just be clear for everyone. Still summer camp. So that's why that's still on the plans, but the buildings themselves will not be sprinkler or heated.
And so the footprint of the cabins hasn't changed at all?
No, I know.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Do you have any architect drawings of the buildings?
Yeah, they yeah, they were getting
In the first one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Four plan buildings.
Yeah. Yeah. When you do your presentation, you'll show how to turn building, say, right? Yeah, so I'll just wait, anyone who would have a have a question or comment when we start, as of right now, no, no, I'm going to turn over to the application manager. We took over you on any modifications they made since the last time we met.
I guess just one
Go right ahead.
To the chair. Any other work outstanding at the camp that hasn't been completed that we know of from other permits? Do you know, Randy, I mean, has the camp, Camp Jocelyn, have all the work has been permitted in the past? There's nothing outstanding?
Actually, the only thing that they've done to this point, while they they I don't know if they they working on installing that system, they were screwing right into the cell. They had money, three cabins, they're not sure that they can jack them out. They had demonstration permits, but they do not have permits to build any gap, because they need approval from the board before they can move forward.
And everything else been signed off for occupancy on the the large, the dining hall and stuff, that's all completed and outstanding?
As far as I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, go right ahead, Mike.
All right, well, this is a good spot where
Yeah.
One can see it. So just quickly, what we did since the last These are the cabins here, cabins A and B that were pushed apart, provide the separation necessary for compliance with the zoning ordinance. The handicap drop-off area that I mentioned earlier here for cabin C and adjacent to cabin D right here. Those are the only site plan changes we've made. As already discussed, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for reading that long letter from Mr. Meskis, I think that was important to read.
Yes.
There's some confusion about what the use is. It is an nonprofit school, again, not a school in a typical fashion that one might think, but the purpose of the organization partners center to provide education for diabetic children for nursing staff that go there. So that is the use according to the zoning ordinance, but the actual use in reality is still a summer camp. There is no summer camp used in the zoning ordinance, that's why. And we literally sat down this mess, went through every line in the zoning ordinance, what is what is the use of this? There is the campground use in the zoning ordinance, that's for-profit campgrounds, which this is not. So we arrived at that usual agreement that is the appropriate use for this for this site and both based on other uses in town that mentioned in this letter. We have confirmed with the state architect class of course that if we're not doing work on any of the existing buildings, that we did not need to make them handicap accessible, it only applies to buildings that we're working in. So the plan that you have in front of you now complies, we have correspondence from the board stating that. We discussed the removal of heating and removal of the sprinklers from the project, and that the pipes will still be proposed to be installed as part of this project. We discussed McClure's peer review earlier today on the latest revisions and the storm report, they have no further comment. And finally, again, Mr. Meskis's review, we addressed all his comments satisfactorily, we believe. The only other item I point out that we mentioned in our February twenty-third letter was a question from, I think it was a board member on fire department access, and I seem to be access to these new cabins. Once this project is done, this is the leach field, it's not your typical leach fields, your dispersal tubing, they're about twelve inches in the ground. This is a grass field, grass field that'll be maintained, that'll be maintained and can be driven over in the need of emergency to get access down to any of these buildings. Any of these buildings in this area. So the question was, could it driven over for emergency access? The answer is yes. So with that, I think that addresses all the outstanding comments and questions that we have heard so far. Happy to go into more detail, anyone likes?
Which question can I ask? Piping for the sprinklers being installed or sprinkling heating will be installed?
The underground piping on the site from where it leaves the penthouse to each building will be installed, but not connected into the building because there's no So it just makes sense to do it now when they have the equipment on the site, they're doing all this work, it's going to be much more difficult to come in later and work around these buildings and all the finished areas, do that work. So the plan is to do that now for future use.
Well, I'm just thinking about when they have the time that we're all being paid.
All right, any questions from the board at all?
Was there a storage tank or a hydraulic pump for the sprinklers that is also being removed?
There is a very large tank in the penthouse, I forget how large it is, tens of thousands of gallons in the basement of the, we call this a penthouse, the dining hall that was proposed and has already has already been designed really to feed these new buildings.
Is it pentas sprinkler?
It is, yeah.
Don, you have any questions at all?
I do not.
Okay. What is, go ahead, John.
Just so that system that's there, the penthouse was originally for the three buildings that are now being built now, that was the bottom.
My understanding, I'm sorry, my understanding is that it was designed to serve the penthouse and the site as a whole.
Okay.
Even though enough is quite good at that point, there's experts that know those calculations better than I, but that's all been done already in anticipation that we work on sprinkler, now we submit with the building current package with this out now, so. That was my understanding, that that tank is sized to to serve the site.
All right, before I open up to the public comment, we can hear from McClure Engineering, this is the board's peer review. From Dennis Rice, McClure Engineering performed the review of the second revised supplemental package for the Camp Johnson Site Plan Approval Project located at one fifty Richardson's Corner Road, Cheltenham, Mass. Submission has been revised in response to the first second letter review dated January third, twenty twenty-three. McClure has received and reviewed the following information, the couple letters to Randy, and revised storm report. Based on this supplemental, McClure offers the following italicized initial site visit promise, all items in this section have been satisfied. Zoning by law review. With the exception of item one, which requires him to confess and not since when he received, all the items in this section have been satisfied. In fact, all can still want to management, all items in this section have been satisfied. Plan review in general, here in comments, all items in this second have been satisfied. All right, this time I'd like to open up to the public. Again, if you have a common question, please state your name and address.
My name is Peter Staxus. I live at one forty-seven Richardson's Corner Road. I was just wondering if anybody really reviewed the site location, the cabin C. This is the one that's behind the director's cabin. It's a sixty by forty building. I'm not really sure if it's going to fit in there between the wetlands and the space that needs to be done from the other cabins that are existing. Is there some way we can get that off my bucket list as?
All right, I know that John Smith and I did a study on Monday, probably by the applicant's engineer and then a staff member of Camp Jocelyn, we did see it, I mean, it wasn't staked.
Yeah.
But I see that they did turn, they turned, they did turn the building on the print, which and then based upon this, that's like when they still they are that not with, I mean, they are within the buffer, which they have a permit from conservation on. So I don't know if you want to add comment, John, to that, am I?
No.
Notice anything?
No, I mean, it was it was cleared, cleared, whatever. We, as we looked, and it was without it being staked. Just the parameters of your your concern.
Yeah.
Is your concern more that distance?
Yes, that, and I think it's close to the buffer zone for the weapon. There is a temporary, temporary little
Is that flag, Mike, or?
So I guess the only way I can respond to that comment is, you know, there's a site survey that was done for the entire site. Whether the flag identified, located, photography done, building was cited, the size as proposed on the plan. Does it fit? Yes, it fits, and the plan shows that. Has it staked out yet? No, there's no need to stake it up because it's on permits yet for the builder, and that building's the last one that's going to be built, frankly. So it's not going to be staked out for some time, but yes, it does fit in that area. We know, we stick in the buffer zone, we've already gone to that permit, that building has not changed at all since then. So that's, I guess, my response to that.
Yeah, I mean, this, just like any other plan, should be out, didn't have to change or to modify the plan. It would be, at the very least, a field modification, if they come back before the board, or if it was something more major, it'd be a site plan modification. So if they had to move that cabin, depending on how much of a big deal it was, then they would have to come back to the board that commissioned you that, and possibly conservation, if there was an issue with conservation. But it's incited, and conservation has already approved that, sounds a death sentence, so. Well, it's still the game, often in the middle, if we actually go to build it. Because it would be proved after whatever the final plan we have, X date, and if a new plan gets submitted, then we have to find out what changes we can do submission and then move go forward on how we would handle that.
So as it stands now, as it was laid out, and with the parameters of the, where the wetlands is, it fits where it's supposed to, according to, you know, you've got the approval from Hong Kong, that is okay to go.
Yes.
Does that answer your question? Or do you want to physically see it?
I I would like somebody to physically see that it fits because the original conservation permit that was given to them, that cabin was not in that position. It was, so A, B, and C were along along where A and B is now. And when they realized they had to move cabin out because of their drinking water requirements, an amendment was made at the conservation board to go with where this cabin is.
Where it's now, where he's located.
Yeah, that was not on the original plan and
You're saying the original plan back in two thousand and four? Just the first rendition of this?
Yeah, the first rendition was supposed to have three cabins side by side. And then when they realized they couldn't fit the third one in there, they moved it to that location. And that location was never on the first conservation hearing. They just showed hay bales immediately or ground.
So is it just a matter of getting the conservation agent back up there to look at the new, the new design? Is that?
That would, that would work.
That's what you're asking?
Can I, can I respond to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
And when I address this, the last meeting, that's already been done. We we modified the conservation permit for that new cabin location, went through the whole process, the board reviewed it, the agent reviewed it, their consultant reviewed it, that's all been done a year and a half ago. That process has already been through. So yes, he's correct, in the original plan, the cabins were together, as I discussed last time, we had to move one because the drinking water was supplied, that forces to have to go back to Hong Kong, which we did. We have, and the current permit reflects this layout.
Rachel is all set.
She's all set.
Okay.
Okay.
The other question I have is the drawings that I see for the camper cabins. They have twenty-two beds to them with three staff members in the lot. The plans show an apartment in the basement of these buildings and nothing, and they have a set of plans to show up.
I thought the apartment was just in the basement of the of that one, that was a building D? That's behind the cafeteria, and that's existing now?
Just to clarify, and again, this was discussed at the last meeting, cabin D is a little bit different than A, B, and C. Cabin D, the first floor has the bunks for for the campers and staff. The basement has two apartments for the doctors that reside on the site during camp programs.
I remember that from the last meeting.
Now, does that also have a loft?
Name and address, please.
James and I, I live in forty-nine
Thank you.
Yeah, all cabins, A, B, C, and D have a small loft that fits, I think, two bunks for staff.
So so as of right now, just the fourth cabin, we'll we'll call it the will have an apartment in the basement of it for doctor staff.
That's what I'm just thinking, yes.
Okay, so A, B, and C won't have apartments in the basement of them?
They do not, it's not on the plan that was submitted, not
But I did see something, but I didn't realize it was just for the D, I just figured it was for all the above cabin.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, I do. The leach field, now, what makes that accessible to drive over with a loaded fire truck? I mean, can you explain that to me, because I'm not getting how that would hold a fire truck?
That's an engineer question.
I don't know the sort of help that happens to having to do this, with this hearing, but I'll entertain it, but it's dispersal tubing, so a half-inch diameter tubing, lay down back and forth, and I don't know, probably fifty rows or something like that. That does support vehicle traffic if you need to pull from passenger cars, maintenance vehicles, a fire truck has to go over that to put out a fire. Might they damage some elements of the system? Sure, we'll have to fix it.
Yeah, I guess my concern
It's not going to collapse, there's no pipes and stone that would collapse under the weight of a truck.
My concern was, I just, you know, after they put the fire on or whatever they're doing there, if they sink, they could be stuck there while a building is burning down, that's that's my concern.
Yeah, that my my opinion is that won't happen, it's on the top of a sunny field, it's not in the shade, wouldn't be any mud or anything like that. Literally on the top of the crown of the field, everything drains away from it. It should never be a muddy field, that's what they they use for all their activities anyway.
Now, is there any other way to get in and out of there without going over the leach field with the emergency apparatus? Or is that the only way in?
I'm not sure how to answer that, they can access the site over the YouTube with their equipment.
I guess I think, are you getting, is there any pathways other than
Yeah, there are no pathways to get to those buildings other than going over the leach field.
There's a, there's a walkway, there's no roads that go in that direction, there's an access road that loops around the other side of the site from the parking lot behind the dining hall, all the way around to cab where cabin C is going to be, but it stops there, does not connect through the primary From the parking lot behind the dining hall, all the way around to cab where Cabin C is going to be, but it stops there, does not connect through the primary, primary area of the site where the most of the cabins are.
All right, any other questions from the public? Do you have any online? With the chat. Okay, um.
I do.
Yeah, go right ahead, Shelley.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm Shelley Yeager Doucette, one oh five Blood Road. Um, I, I can't see the plans. I've never seen the plans, but I'm the former executive director of the Barton Center for Diabetes Education. And I'm a consultant for diabetes camps worldwide, so I know this, you know, use case very. I'm very familiar with it. My question is this, um. I, I think I heard that you said the loft area sleeps three, and the sleeping floor. Uh, accommodates, I don't remember how many it was, but it was like twenty-two campers? Is that correct?
I don't have the architect's plans with me, but there's a total of twenty-two beds. I forget what the split is between the main floor and how many are in the, in the met, in the loft, if you will.
But is it twenty-two campers, or is it less campers and the twenty-two is all? The, the point I'm getting at is that the ratios of campers to professionals, and especially in medical specialty camps. It's generally, um, understood that you try to keep those, it may not be in the Massachusetts Building Code, but it's certainly in the accreditation codes for camps. And in the health codes, that you try to keep those ratios more stringent, and also that you don't put campers in bunk beds, and I can't see the plans. So I don't know if the campers are in bunk beds or not, but it's very difficult to treat a low blood sugar or a child who might be having a seizure. Um, or even check blood sugars in a child that's on an upper bunk, if you're the staff member attending. So some of these things are just things I know because I've been in this business for almost forty years. Um, they may not be in mass building codes, and they may not actually be pertinent to the planning board, but they're certainly pertinent to the safety of the campers at Jocelyn Camp and Barton Camp.
Thank you very much, Shelley. I guess. I, I'm not coming with any, how the process works, does, does the applicant need to apply something to the board of health going forward, I guess, much as far as increasing the number of. With the cabin, meaning, I eliminate some, and you, you're rebuilding a couple more that hold more campers?
Not to mine, outside of the stuff that.
Okay.
That's already been approved.
All right.
Outside of that is beyond my.
Okay.
My pay rate.
That's what I'm asking. All right. Let's go some information, good information as far as the process goes for that. I know it doesn't, like, she put a purpose that's not pertinent to our board, but this is the thing to know.
I mean, it would be really a shame to build these cabins and have the American Camp Association not accredit the camp because they were inappropriately built, you know what I mean? Um, more importantly, it'd be really a shame to have campers who weren't safe because the staff ratios and the ability to treat kids with type one diabetes was an optimum. So just looking out for the kids with diabetes here.
From, from what I remember looking at the floor plans, they were not bunks, they were beds.
Okay.
So many bunk beds, you recall?
Yeah. You recall that from the last meeting?
Okay, all right, I guess. I said, like, yeah, um, the comments, public comment from Shelley is really important to us as far as that. I guess, yeah, uh, posted their own risk, you know, get accredited as far as that goes. All right, any other comments or questions from the, from the public?
One last.
Go ahead, Peter.
Is there gonna be a timeframe set that's classified as a summer camp program? Is. The Barton Group going to be able to rent and lease the property out to, um, other groups? And what I'm getting at is they have a reenactment groups that do presently brandy the Oxford site? Is that gonna be allowed at Jocelyn's site, or is it just gonna be a summer camp or diabetic programs? Just to make sure if we're gonna have reenactment groups.
Okay.
That can be allowed?
Okay, I'm going back to the email from Kurt, I think he mentions, um. Something over here, right out of the table. When I remember that first meeting, I think the, um, link from. The Jocelyn, I mentioned, uh, the camp timeframe.
About ten weeks?
Yeah, something about that, so.
But then what happens during the off time?
Yeah, um.
I can't find that. Yeah. The applicant had testified the last hearing that the camp would operate from the beginning in June until the, through the second week of August. That was their season.
Have a lot of those presented.
So in the site plan application. Chairman, would the, would the use be then to, uh. There's no proposed change in the use from the existing? And, and if there is, then there would require another site plan application?
Yeah.
In the Graves' comment, he, he addressed that in zoning bylaw review number one.
Yeah.
For the record, there's no proposed change in, in use from the existing, you know, use. Uh, and maybe we include that in a special permit itself, that there's no change of use.
Yep, correct, just on that, thank you very much.
For, for the new cabins, or going further, if there is a change of use, for example, a, um, another event by a different group. Then. Wire enough site plan application or change to the site plan?
The only problem that I think that the board might have is, because I think Kurt references right here in the, in email, the zoning bylaw, in all use cases, makes still differentiation between year-round seasonal or occasional activities. I think that's a tough one I have, so.
But a change of use would be.
Oh, absolutely, check that box.
To a profitable.
Yeah, absolutely.
Drive-in movie theater.
Exactly.
Change of.
And one of the things working, hanging their hat on it, this is the nonprofit school. That means it's not a wedding venue, it's not, you know, a for-profit.
Right, right.
It's a nonprofit camp, and that's what they use in, you know, a nonprofit school, so could that be some sort of for-profit, profit operation is totally not. Compliant with their, the five oh one C status, you know, as a nonprofit organization, so.
Would we have to condition that, or?
I mean, we could, you know, they have to, you know, they're approved to be that, so more to make it a condition, they have to continue to operate that way. Shouldn't be anything else, they got to move back to the board this board.
Would that condition, that, yeah, yeah, but, and would just be, would that condition be legal? As far as referring back to our bylaws, or we'd have to check that pretty thoroughly.
They, the building commission itself, it said that it's operating as a nonprofit school, which is spelled out in our bylaws under this section. And, right, you know, five oh one C status, so they have to, in order to maintain that status, they can't be doing for-profit events. You know, you can't turn into a concert venue, or, you know, things that ever make possibly a charity event or something, but they couldn't. You, you know, wedding reception or things like that.
It's a primary use.
Right. Because they have to maintain their nonprofit.
Yeah, because as far as like a zoning discussion, like, that wedding would be an occasional activity. That's, I think that how, from reading, it's how we laid it out. That's how, in this email, as far as, that, that's how we consider it.
So then occasional activities would be permitted because they're not a primary?
Because it's not, it's not clearly defined in the zoning by law. That's the tough part.
Uh huh, yeah.
That could all.
Yeah, and honestly, if they had one or two wedding receptions during the course of the year, the town probably wouldn't even be aware it happened, you know? It's within the grounds of the camp, however it became something that was. More than that, then, you know, and obviously have a lot of concerned citizens that I'm sure would bring to the town's attendance, they saw something, you know, going on that would not be compliant with their proof for.
Does the property get a permit every year as a summer camp from the building inspection services?
For health.
The board of health has to issue as a.
Yeah, it's actually specifically for a.
So then if we change this to a not-for-profit school, do they no longer have to get such permits?
That came to light today. Literally like late in the night, but, so. And when I looked at the nature camp, it was actually to be a nonprofit school, it was approved by the secretary of state. So does this have to be approved by the secretary of state to be a nonprofit school? I don't have the answer to that question because it's been hours since I found the value. So is it?
Is it indicated on the site plan application, what is this entity, and they have to declare, well, this is a not-for-profit school, or this is a summer camp, or this is a drive-in movie theater? Like this.
I think, I mean, actually, they, uh, implied this thing and operated, they continue to operate as a summer camp. I think the issue with, with the zoning bylaws, we don't have a definition for a summer camp.
That is a problem.
So will the application have to be changed?
Well.
Right, because there's no such thing as a summer camp.
Well, they're what you call now a nonprofit school, so that's not even what we called them before.
Well, unless they're grandfathered, uh.
Well, that's right, I heard this is a free, non-conform use, then you're long before zoning, right, in the town. So are they still operating under their free, just.
Right, and just let's continue that, I guess. All right, as defined as what, there's no definition of that. As it used to be.
Oh, we just. Permit from the board of health, or. And it's probably. Yeah, and old one.
So, I, I guess my one question, my one question is. If in the off-season, that they're not using it for a camp program, are we gonna see them renting it for the weekend, or the week, to a reenactment group? Who, you know, they, they dress up in their costumes and do reenactment stuff? Are they gonna be allowed to do stuff like that?
I guess, the, 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 they're gonna be unheeded building, so.
Yeah.
I guess what you're asking is, would they be permitted to do such a?
It's just that I've seen it over the last three or four years. Before camp opens, reenactment groups are in there. After camp closes, reenactment groups are in there. They're supposed to go before the board of health, to get a food vendors, connect for the weekend, just their food and stuff. I don't know if these issues that then.
Now, are they open and operational now?
There's no.
Not during the winter.
Yeah, because they, because they clearly stayed with the.
But it will be open and.
Because there was something going on the past two weekends, and the kids ran into the trail, it'd be on my house.
Yeah.
Probably about ten or fifteen of them. Like teenagers, early twenties.
Yeah.
Which I thought was a little high items. I'm sitting on the back deck, and I was like, what the hell is this?
Are any other comments from the public? All right.
Well, I was gonna say, I, I know the boys scouts use that property sometimes too, so I, I don't think it's permitted, it's, it's still recreation.
Okay.
Now, the, um, those are permitted for the lofts and basement? What does that make that a three-story building?
That's, that's through the building.
That's what we're doing, okay, and then overheads, something to do with what's going on here with the zoning?
Yeah, because I mean, I think the, the bylaw does have a maximum height for a building.
It does, yes, I'm aware of that. That's why I asked that question.
Just with the, in the audience's information, it came out about what the beds are. According to the plan we have here, there's one single bed and the rest are all bunk beds.
One single bed and the rest are bunks, okay.
That totals up to twenty-two beds.
Right, right.
The twenty-two count upstairs.
Oh, then there's a loft, or I guess, uh, two.
Two beds and a bunk?
Adult supervisor, there were staff.
All right, so there's some other public comments, the motion that both the public can have discussion amongst the board members?
Anyone else on Zoom, remote?
No. Got one new message. There's the question by a neighbor on Zoom, there is no use of the camp shopping facility for any rentals, et cetera, and mugs besides staff housing. All right, thank you for that information.
As we're seeing things, then.
Yeah, I'm just going all sudden.
Actually.
Go ahead.
I was just thinking, while we hear Dennis talking from the, by the time.
Yeah, you have any?
Which is the, the fire truck, you know?
Yeah, you have any?
Having access to the property is like.
You generally don't drive the large apparatus off paved or hard-packed trails. We do have a brush truck that we will bring off-road from time to time. It's a, it's an F, um, four fifty, the chassis, with three hundred and seventy-five gallons of water. It's not like we're bringing a thousand gallon one. Fire truck over that property, we would bring it to the paved parking lot and just log hose. If there was anything at any other remote sites, we wouldn't drive the heavy apparatus off of it. An ambulance maybe too, if there was a medical emergency, but. Again, those are E-series or F-series.
Yeah.
I didn't mean to put you on.
No, that's fine, I was gonna comment earlier, but I didn't want to. Didn't want to time it, but, and so.
Are, are these cabins, I guess, is a question for the applicant, are these cabins labeled from the outside, or like street numbers on a house, or how are they identified to responders?
No, they'll, they generally name their cabins or number them. Um, I imagine that'll be the same with these new ones.
Are there street names? Is that a problem for responders?
It's not, um, a few times we've been there, and I've been there, uh, the counselors are very good about directing us where we have to go, if they're not. It's a place that's easily accessible, um, but we do have a layout and a map in our onboard computer system that they can bring up. And they'll direct us where we have to go, and if we have to walk there, we can drop there. But staff is generally really good about directing us, getting the person to where we have, where we just pull in.
Do the motion to continue to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, all those in favor?
Gene, Vince and I.
Phil, Fontaine, I.
Don, Clay, I.
Ross, Matt, the I?
Hi, John Smith.
All right. Full discussion on the site plan in front of us. Go ahead, John.
So just some of the uh, comments there. And it's probably not our, our purview, but permitting of other, other activities that the site during off. What would, we would have no conditions to that, or we have to?
Because it's a site plan only.
Granted, it's a leeway here because without knowing what other proposed use in there were on the property, it might work, you're approving this site plan based on what they're presenting. Should it be anything else, it might change, contain stipulations such as parking, you know, might not even be, the use might be what they use, you know, ends up causing like the need for more parking. So any other proposed use on this property aside what they're proposing here would bring it back to the board at least for a site plan modification, if not a full-blown site plan special permit, depending on what would be imposed on the property.
Even like a, a weekend or a event or something of that nature?
I mean, yeah, I, it's, if they were to hold, you know, continued weekend events and, you know, it's like they, it's gonna be a little bit of a judgment, like if there was like two weekends every year of a whole year that they had some sort of event. Does that justify a site plan? You know, that's kind of a, that's a usual logic. However, if it becomes, you know, four, five, ten a year, then they really should be back before the board. You know, for at least the modification for whatever that goes due to. Even if it's like a Y, you know, allowed in the district, you know, this, this whole approval is based on a site plan. So if they're doing something outside of what this site plan approval is, even the permitted use in that district, they really should be back before the board.
And if not, then it goes to zoning enforcement officer.
Yeah, if they're not providing the site plan, then it will become an enforcement measure.
Does it make any, we probably should ask this one, they're changing the property use classification is. Does that present a problem?
The, uh, all I can say is nation's classroom, I, I went back, I got, you know, they got years of files here. And they, they were considered under the same type of use as a nonprofit school. They had to get approval from the Secretary of State. I mean, it was like, it wasn't just, you know, a matter here at the planning board. They had to get that approval as well, but if we consider it a nonprofit school, the state of Massachusetts had to acknowledge that, and they have their own restrictions on what can be done as far as the consideration of nonprofit schools. Even though in, in acknowledging that it's run like a camp, but it's still in education use.
For ten weeks.
Well, you know, here they're, the argument to get to being educated in, works to diabetes, nurses are getting training, so, but and, but the nature conserving children would be educated on various things to do with nature, and they still have that. Like I said, this, this happened today, so.
Can we require them to apply for that? To get um, that designation from the Secretary of State?
If, if it's required, I think we definitely should. I mean, for them to, you know, to make sure that we have all our ducks in the hole. We don't just allow something, you know.
Would that be part of a condition?
Yeah, I say they're like, I, I'll, I'll put the premise if required because when they apply to the uh, state, I think it was nine, it was been a few years. So the rules may have changed, that's all I'm saying, so, but it was approved by the state, the state of Jersey.
And Mr. Andrew, that, that is the intention is for change the use limitation of.
I, I, I'm sorry, after this, we, that is, there's no change in use. It's a clarification of what use is because there isn't a use that fits that particular site. So the application says camp, says campground or campers that, because at that point, it hadn't been identified. Really, what, where does it fit in the zoning by?
Yeah, yeah.
So since the initial, since that initial submission, we've had the conversation with these only enforcement officers. You declared this is the use, and that's, that's going forward, that's what we're saying to use it.
Exactly what I remember back then. He was, it started in nineteen ninety-three. Use them upgrades and everything, and they had a site plan approved for it. Which also triggered the need for the Secretary of State to approve it as well as a nonprofit school. And then they had the sex, they had certain restrictions on how it was operated.
Lots of restrictions once you put up the flag and say you're a school, and there's a whole set of uh, requirements for that from the.
Department of. Driving is totally out of the town of Carlton, Jan, and I don't, you know, I can't speak if that is the case, but when do you ever hear alarm actually go, get easier, you know, so. So I would assume that requirement may still be there, but I think they.
But the zoning enforcement officer has declared that this is a, a not-for-profit school use.
Yeah, it's a public-private secretarial or denominational school nonprofit is allowed in the A R sixties of place where we view it.
Yeah, and it's, I mean, it's, it's, you know, they, they both had their own admission statements, you know, what they knew, but it's similar exact, just like the nature and there's the, you know, it's operated, this is operating in similar fashion. So, and they're both considered no profit five oh one C, you know, non, nonprofit school.
We have something like it, as long as it meets Mass General law or something, something to fall back on instead of. But then define, that's like, define school, what's defined by. I want to open this whole thing up. Then it's like, uh, defined school, well, then we have to go to the mass, you know, statues. They define a school.
I mean, like, but that fall under the building, but as far as I think their mechanism is um.
And I, I doubt a hard building could define school.
No, then, or maybe on a used, used.
And then we would defer to the mass statutes as one of school is, and therefore these are all requirements. School is not on us to determine.
On them not to be employed. It's the, the Secretary of State ends up issuing a sort of case in.
All right, but that's outside of our scope here.
Right. So we could put in a condition that if it's required to be done, you know, be considered a nonprofit school.
All right, thinking out loud, and that satisfies from the planning board point of view, whatever their requirements are to be a school, it's not on us. They're obligated, so we can approve it as this use classification according to our bylaws.
All right, do you have any conditions for the site plan that we're thinking about? Such as. I'm afraid for the camp, from the camp. Operation.
Well, it's um, that's one of the ones that I ran down. They uh, will not be hinged, the new buildings will not be heated or sprinkled. They were built as per the, when it's been submitted to the board and changes that plan would require back into the board.
That covers all the bases, but.
Right.
All right.
So when are the dates to the op- operate now? What is the?
June, for the first two weeks in August, to the second week in August.
Yeah, that's the, they debated that their season was from beginning of June to the second week in August. That they will continue it up. They stated that kinds of the board's approval is based on the camp will operate from the beginning of June to the second, through the second week of August each year.
And there is year-round staff on the, on the site too, correct?
There's someone up in the third.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of that building, sorry. Yeah, the doctors, cordages and stuff, that's actually real residential structure.
All right, do we have a motion to, uh, any other discussion?
So are we including in that, and did you sweep in the uh, months of operation of the camp?
Yeah. They, they stated on the record that they operate from the beginning of June through the second week of August, so that'll be part of the, uh, uh, you know, a eight edition.
Is that right, Michael? But.
I believe that. I mean, it's, it's a school age children, so they come around the camp and get it on school. I can't speak for them exactly the dates, but I think that's sound enough.
Right, okay.
I mean, well, it's simple, they really wanted to, like, say they want to operate till the end of March, take them back to the board and modify the decision, you know? Relatively simply, you know, without, you know. They felt was just a simple change versus they forebrought new application.
All right, any other discussion? You're an unseen, their motion to approve the site plan with conditions set forth. And just discuss.
And then there will be the whole.
Oh, yeah.
The standard, you know, figure section.
Absolutely, no. No procedures of operations as far as any other site plan goes.
Can you try to make a motion to approve this like, the plan, by the representative tonight, with the, the list of uh, conditions that Randy is working on, as far as hours of operation, months of operation. And to Curtis's note for the um, public private secretary of the nominational school.
All right, there's a second.
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Gene, Vince and I.
Fontaine, I.
John Smith, I.
Don, Clay, I.
Ross, Matt, the I. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we got a continued public hearing for D K Barry Development Company, L O C, brought away, defended of subdivision plan three twenty-five Worcester Road. And there was an email in our packet from zoning enforcement officer. It's about the uh.
Are we Worcester Road or Larry's way first?
Uh, we are the Worcester Road Cemetery, yep. So Kurt's email. Four forty, four hundred and sixty-four, required twenty-four lot ones along the front part of the wave, their finishing stage plan dated nine twenty-two, divided twelve sixteen twenty-two. Um, lot width, the linear distance from side lot line to side lot line, that's it along the twenty-yard step back line. At no point between the front lot line and the rear of the purpose of the structure located on the lot, you know, the lot having width within two-thirds of the minimum, which is not very funny. This lot, existing structure, home garage, as they are located, does not meet the above requirements, nor is this property eligible for reduced furniture lot, as seen in section two hundred to five point one three, these furniture lots. These furniture lots may be created and excluded from existing and in front of requirements designed to play more authorized to create, you know, the lot by respect apart from these lot plans and according to the regulations for the terms set forth below step plan, so only be committed in the aggregate housing density are forty zoning districts.
Technically kind of.
No problem, no problem, do it all. I just wanted to get everyone aware.
We are working through revisions for this right now, but that comment that he's referring to, so the board is aware, is this distance right here? For the frontage for this year, has to be at least a hundred and seventy-three point three to the rear of the structure.
Okay, gotcha.
That's what he's getting, two-thirds of two-sixty. Um, this plan, we are working um, on a revision for, but I was hoping to at least address driveway comments while Dennis is here tonight, um, and then let's continue, it's up to that. There's been some concerns on the driveway access and it was requested to get um, Captain Carson's opinion.
Yeah, since Captain Carson's here, different times, it comes out, so you have to, all right, anyways, uh, then issue about those existing folks. They want to do the subdivision, and they're gonna just use the existing access way to the property now, and it's, at the slope, one of the, I think, one of the uh.
The next, yeah.
Yeah, and if it exceeds that, looking for a waiver on that. We just, I think some comment, some concerns from the board as far as how would hold up with a, any vehicle from your department, would they go down? How would handle it and stuff like that?
So it's, it's, it's to the chair, sorry. It's, it's, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, so it was, I think it was grade, it was condition, and it was material that we were concerned about, and, and the width of that, of that driveway, I think was the biggest concern.
All right, perfect. Um, after working, um, I don't know how many months or years, you know, we've been working on it. We took an engine down there after our last meeting. Um, I witnessed our first new piece go down there. No issues with the grade. It, it's not an immediate grade, so the gradual grade increase isn't an issue for our apparatus to, to go down or to come out. Um, the concern that we have is the, what the driveway is made out of, and it's dirt and mud right now. Um, so it would be our recommendation that a paved surface be put in place and maintained year-round. The width isn't a concern, it's, it's plenty wide now, um, but we would ask that it be paved. I'm not sure what the engineers' recommendations are about how wide you can pave, if you have to come to the edge or get to be a foot from, I don't know that specifically, but um, the width of it right now is not an issue to drive any of the apparatus that we bring down that uh, driveway.
For a, a single home driveway is twelve feet, or a common driveway is eighteen feet, so I mean, we're not anticipating or expecting, I don't, I can't speak for the board, but I'm like, or to say anticipating if this, we build like a road. Given the use on the property, but if you're looking at the driveway standards of what would normally be required, a single driveway, if it was a single family home, it would be twelve feet, but for a common driveway for more than one use on the property would be eighteen feet for the common portion of the driveway.
And I did go in measure the driveway widths. It starts out way wide at every twenty, gradually goes. Um, gradually goes down to right where the pipes start. There's three pipes that cross the road that gradually comes down, um, down to about sixteen and a half, seventeen feet. Right at the pipes through where the pipes are, and then it starts to open up a little bit more back up to eighteen. As you start getting up the hill into the property, um, past the wetlands. Um. And as far as surface requirements, um, as paving, um. What would that really look like, Dennis, as far as, I mean, you and I had the conversation in your office before, but I just wanna understand now.
I think the board would suspect that out.
Do, yeah, it's. No offense to Dennis, but we have.
Done taken.
We have a set of, of, of rules that govern that, so that's, that's just what it, it will be what it will be, whatever.
Base and top, whatever is specified.
Yeah, I, I mean, when you say paved surface, that means pavement, not milling. I just, just clarification for the application.
So in our, so we should have a, a spec for a common drive in our. Either TPW inspector has it or Curtis has it, right?
Yeah, well, it's exactly in a, uh, subdivision rate, so, yeah. Andrew would actually oversee that.
So whatever that is, get, you would go and get that.
Yeah, on driveway permit.
So you know.
Yeah, I was just curious.
So you know what's the, so you know what it would, what the cost is and you can. Supply it to your contractor, so he can give you a price.
Yeah, okay.
The whole length of the driveway, you just show.
Correct, and we've talked about, I don't know, the hammerhead on the end there, if you can see. Uh, you can't see it on this plan. We've talked going all the way up around, um, the pad and the, the batteries up there. Not all the way, we, we are gonna give some leniency because there is a great issue. When you're coming around, if you're looking at a clock, probably the four o'clock or three o'clock or four o'clock. It is a very steep grade, so we're not, we're gonna have a hammerhead put there so that our apparatus could turn around. Um, and then there's probably. Yeah, with forty feet up the gap. Yeah, so it's well beyond. Within this is where the T turnaround is, that you're thinking of Dennis, um. This comes in straight and the T turnaround is here where the pipe connections would be on the, on the other plan that you'd be able to see. First one, that's where, but it also goes up and around to another hammerhead on the far side. Yep, the gate comes up over here.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, and that.
It's in one of the plans that I was.
Yeah, that surface we should address on the special permit too, just show it on there, um, but as far as this roadway goes. We'll go to here for this and then the special permit will cover, um, the rest of the access. And then the, the width throughout after where it narrows to the over those culverts.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that the bylaw states eighteen feet, um, of a paved surface. We, we would ask for that width to be maintained throughout the entirety of that paved road, we would give that. The leniency and variance at the, at the culvert as. You know, the courtesy. Through everywhere else that we would put apparatus will require that the bylaw be followed. Eighteen feet. Our bylaw says eighteen feet. But it, it also says all the way. It says perimeter active, yeah, subsection five under. The sole. Yeah, it's the sole. So it's not able to go around the perimeter of the hole. So Kurt, so we're talking two different applications right now, um, this application purposes. Pavement for this T turnaround. Our discussions prior for our, um, access roads around have been, um. For the special permit part of it would be the same material as we use on, um, solar fields as far as roadway material. Um, but the purpose of the subdivision roadway. Different material, different situation, yeah.
Alright, anything else that you have? Hey, thank you for coming.
Well, my pleasure.
Just helps it out.
The other ones that.
I thought I should have been here a month or so ago.
So I take it you're requesting a continuation?
I am, yes, I have a letter for you for that continuation too.
You have a motion to continue?
Might as well fifteen.
Uh, yeah, so, yeah, I did specify on this one, I would like to be here March fifteenth, the board. Um. Let me double check. Uh, portway to fifth, April fifth, please.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion to continue, um, portway. Uh, definitive subdivision plan from ZP Battery to April fifteenth.
Yeah, April fifth.
April fifth.
Make a motion to continue the application for portway and three two five Worcester Road for April fifth, twenty twenty three.
We have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Jean Vince and I.
Phil Fontaine I. John Smith I.
Go on, Clay I.
Ross Smith, yeah.
We just have everything wrapped up, we're in full plans by Monday.
Alright, why not? I can just read that if you want, if you want, just continue, alright, not.
This, this one doesn't apply yet.
Okay.
Wait, this is one that's fine too.
Alright, right, alright, so next up, we got, um, the continued public hearing for ZP Battery Development Company's, uh. At Larry's Way definitive subdivision plan. Alright, I mean, there's another. Part of that original email.
Larry's Way.
Is Larry's Way, planned dated eight thirty, divided one seventy twenty three. Lots V N F has a principal use of battery storage systems on lot C. Is what's going to be accessory equipment, which here is a phase of the public facility on lot F. As long as the lot are under common control, this does not seem to be a problem, problems could arise if you lost additional uses are proposed. Reiterating the previous comment with this, Mr. Parsons made it through to section two hundred to three point three. Cease structural acres for two or more principal structures are erected on the same lot, I don't conceive of access utility service for drainage serving each structure should be. Functionally equivalent to that requires a separate lots on the playing boards adopting subdivision regulation, minimum lot area width and frontage shall be the sum of the requirements for each structure. And the middle distance between such structures will be the height of the higher building. Alright, is the, um. Property owner aware of. Um, that problems could arise and for either lot of additional uses up and forth.
No, well, actually, the applicant addressed it by removing the lot line, I mean.
So, yeah, are we talking definitive, that, that the comments kind of get mixed up, so we're undefinitive, right?
Yeah.
Okay, um. To your point, um, Chair, um, yes, he is, um. For this definitive revision that we have in front of us now. Uh, we just removed the lot line, uh, that created lot F before putting like the interconnecting equipment on a separate lot. We've got rid of it, keeping it all one lot, um, for the future, um, application here that we'll be into.
By removing the lot line, the accessory use on the same use as the principal use.
Yeah.
Which now meets the bylaw.
Um, so the last time we were here. Uh, this application, there was just really an outstanding comment about existing driveway, um, and. Uh, that existing driveway is pretty robust, um, to say the least. Um, so I'm not sure where the board wants to go with that, have some pictures of the driveway, we'll see what that looks like. Um, but there is ample room for, I don't wanna speak for Captain Carlson here, but there's ample room for an apparatus to move around and maneuver inside that, um. Area.
Alright. Now, I see, oh, it's, well, since we're talking about the driver, I see in general comments twenty four grades recommend that the entire area be fully paved for emergency vehicle turnaround. And we were in agreement with that. Okay.
Yeah, and that is paved currently.
Even the cul-de-sac and everything or is it paved already?
That's, so that, the cul-de-sac, we're not proposing to build the cul-de-sac. So we're proposing to utilize the existing roadway that's already going in there, which is over twenty feet wide.
Yes.
Coming in all the way up and around is, so coming in existing up to this point over here is all paved. Um, when you start going north into where the gravel areas now, that turns into dirt. Uh, which will be a T base with the special permit application, um, tedious roads, um, half inch minus. Material.
Captain Carl, you're recommending that portion is currently gravel that will rotate various facility be paved.
Correct, yep. And when we say paved. But I hate the word paved because.
Asphalt.
Because when we, when we say paved on a solar field, when you say T basis accept acceptable, it's a plowable surface. Um, and that would be what we would be looking to use here, which is a half inch minus material that's. Six inches of half inch mi- mi- minus material, which creates a plowable paved surface. Um, so I'm just asking clarifying for my purposes, because we haven't ever paved anything as far as. The fifteen solar fields we've done in town.
Yeah, it's battery, though, right?
It is, yep, and we're trying to apply the same.
Same standard.
Standard.
Yeah, well, I think of paid, I think it's solid, non-permeable, perfect.
Correct, which, that's why I'm asking, because as an advocate, it could mean totally different.
Yes.
Yeah. Fitness material will, would be the half inch minus material that I'm talking about, so explain that. Paved and brings in some questions in my head, that's all.
Driveway or road. It's one of those.
Right, a problem recommending every day, you know, it's basically for their purposes.
Correct.
Basically that, to emergency vehicles and.
As a road.
We should, you know, and.
Well, asphalt.
Okay, so this is asphalt currently, um, to come in here. Um, for the purposes of this application in front of us definitive site plan, um. This access coming in right now is currently a paved driveway. Um, we are proposing to utilize the existing driveway. Your recommendation is to pave the access driveway, which is currently paved.
No, no, cause I'm going off of the.
No, I.
Where, where the, um.
But batteries is a totally different.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's actually going to apply during the, uh, just the permit application that. The current driveway is paved, so it does probably, you know, meet the. Uh, requirements for driveway structure, which is already there between the battery and that portion to get from. The cul-de-sac to the battery.
The lot E will be activated, paved. Then you're requiring actual pavement.
Yeah, cause I, I'm only going off.
I don't know, no, we talked about, yeah, we're not talking about that yet. Okay. It's a, what are we talking? We're talking.
Who they limit to, there are some pieces, there is pavement in that area.
Yeah.
Has it now?
I was just gonna ask, are we on the subdivision or the site plan? Subdivision?
Subdivision.
Alright, okay.
Yeah, so I'm only going off of Graves, it says, the case there between the existing edge of the driver and the proposed cul-de-sac will not be entirely paved. Existing paved areas will have four inches of plain gravel, she, uh, Graves instead recommends that the entire area be fully paved for emergency vehicle turnaround.
When Mike reviewed the plan.
Yeah.
We reviewed them as separate, for special permit and subdivision, like in, at one time that they were submitted together. So his comments actually applied to the special permit.
Oh.
For.
Gotcha.
In his. Because he, he gave one review of both.
I think, I think, I think what we're trying to not to have is wherever it starts, and wherever that starts. There's not a section that's not paved.
Well, when he, when he comes back before the board.
The twenty seven was the most.
The board.
Yes.
Prior to conditions that that portion of the driveway from the existing cul-de-sac. Easy site for the battery storage. Um, will be paved.
Okay.
I'm sure they have a comment about paving around the fenced in area, a certain amount as well there too.
Wouldn't that subdivision already have, have to show? A paved road access, access from all the lots.
Um, actually.
Like lot E is not accessible by that paved road down this subdivision.
Lot B.
Lot, you know, the. This has an access and utility easement for, through this site already. But this, this has frontage.
Yeah.
Off of Sullivan. This does not have frontage off of this, so this is the purpose. The purpose of this is to create frontage to organize these lots all a little better for zoning purposes. Um, technically, we don't have to do this in order to do what we wanna do on this site, but to clean up the site.
Yeah.
And, and play nice, this is what we're doing, um, so, there are lots in separate uses. Technically, the bylaws allow us to go in and do more usage based upon the frontage that's here.
Um, so. How many, yeah, how many uses are there?
There are six or seven and there's still way more frontage than needed for probably about twelve or thirteen uses on this parcel.
Are you?
Yeah, I did defend lots, I just, uh, forty driving, it would be, it didn't know the way to them.
Are you picking up frontage on Sullivan Road for that?
This gets fronted over here.
Right.
Yeah.
And then lot C is off of Griffin Road.
Correct.
Yeah.
These A, B, C are off of Griffin.
Yes.
They have access, although even though lot B is technically frontage on this cul-de-sac, but yes.
Which, which lot gets fronted off of Sullivan, I'm sorry, is that the, where the solar field currently is?
Correct.
Okay, where's the, where is the access to that solar field, is that, is that on Sullivan?
No, so the a- the access to this site, uh, for, for the solar side, the existing solar is through grit, through, um. Where we're coming in now with this cul-de-sac, um, it is the shaded area, which is an access and utility easement. It's an easement and right of way for them to travel over, um, it is a non-exclusive easement, um. We have the ability to utilize it, anybody else has the ability to utilize it, Larry set it up that way for his tenants.
Yeah, yes, I've been up there myself and you basically go by one solar field to the.
Yeah.
Gate of the last solar field.
Correct, yeah, it goes over the little bridge over the river, yep.
So that access is gonna be through this, this road, that's not off of Sullivan, it's not off of Sullivan, it'd be off of Larry's Way?
Correct, that, that access will remain off of what will be Larry's Way and the existing gravel drive that's there now.
Yeah, that access already, the.
The access already exists, yes. So off of Sullivan Road, is there a curb cut in the driveway that, there's no access really on the side?
That could be all.
And the same with Griffin Road to lot C, there, there's no curb cut driveway? Lot C is a solar field, no, that does not have a curb cut driveway that is accessed from the gravel driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you're taking the, the frontage from that road, but it's really nothing, you can't get to it from Sullivan. Correct, yep, and that's, we've been back and forth with Kurt, um, for a year on all of these applications. This, this plan has been like this for the past year. I apologize, yeah, thank you.
Just on the subdivision plan, it looks like there's some grading on. That being said, on the left hand side, looks like you're cutting that hill out there. But I know the road is further to the right, if you look on the back page here.
Correct.
But now where the subdivision is standing.
Correct, we have to show the grading.
Yeah.
But it's not that we're.
I, I am saying have to show the grading, but the grading on the right looks like it would affect the road, the access road going in. It's like you're filling that area in a little bit, you know, that the way, but not only the back of that road, but the road going towards your. Your. Battery.
Oh, for the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, from the cul-de-sac right on there.
Yep.
Are you gonna show that on your, on your, like, paneling, just show that, show us.
Sorry, what's your ask on that?
I apologize, just to make sure it's there, you know.
To make sure.
Uh, it's, it shows it, so it shows grading on the left hand side, the hill on the left hand side, the cul-de-sac was to be played.
Yeah.
On the right side, as you walk, go into the, as you're going into the new access to the subdivision.
Like four or five o'clock?
Yeah. No, no, right.
Right?
No, John, no, if you're looking at one o'clock on the circle.
Okay, gotcha.
Looking at it that way, I'm sorry.
You wanna see at the top of the knob now?
Yeah, top of the knob there, there's some grading there, that obviously that would, that looks to me that will directly affect that road going in there.
So I'm, we're forks, now where the existing drive.
Yeah, so it's.
There's fill in there.
Yeah, but we're not proposing to fill that.
Well, now you're gonna make that road. Well, how are you gonna make that road going to there?
So we're proposing to ex- to utilize the existing roadway that's already here. Um, as this, as this subdivision road. So we have to show the grading to show what it would be, right?
So that that is not necessary for the road that's there now.
Correct. Correct, so it it would remain existing without the lines that we've drawn in there.
Or is that a pond on the right there?
Um, that's, there's actually a pipe that cuts across over there. Um, actually, I think that's more of a. That might just be a pile of.
Is that?
That's a pile, yeah, oh, sixteen five at the top.
The hill pile, not a pile, I can't see that.
So there's a paved driveway and then the gravel drive coming off.
Yeah, fork, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the gravel goes to the left and the pavement goes to the right over towards the scrap guy there.
Make sure with the app, we are to pave cul-de-sac. Or, I just, I just, you know, if. Very improved subdivision, are they gonna have to pave the circle of the cul-de-sac? Or is that not something?
I'm just looking at number twenty four. Nice. Let's see. When the engine entered the planes, I gravel and hatched on paved areas. Mike's, Mike wants the entire area to be fully booked for emergency needs of curb.
So the cul-de-sac will have to.
Are you concurring with that or?
Oh, that was. A confusion on my part, okay, I don't know, four months ago, three months ago. The cul-de-sacs are just paper roads.
Right.
They're not actually gonna be cul-de-sacs.
Yeah.
It's our determination that there will be turnarounds for our apparatus.
Yeah.
At particular points.
Gotcha.
Throughout the paved portion, but the actual cul-de-sacs on all of subdivisions aren't actually gonna.
Right, yeah.
They're just.
It's just more of a.
It's a need of a turnaround point as well.
You're not.
The equipment.
Yeah.
We are, we are not, no, it it's an understanding that we have with developer that we will still have ample room.
Correct.
Majority of the apparatus.
Alright, okay.
Yeah, so it's easy to take this comment out of.
For sure.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He has to look at it, right, as in, he understands that we're looking for the waivers, but he has to still comment on every year by law purposes.
Alright, are there any other comments on the subdivision plan?
Yeah, I was kinda going back to Sullivan Road site again, um, Randy, can you check the old, the 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 site plan for that? Wasn't the access for that field off of Griffin? Or was it always through this site?
There is actually access to it often Griffin, um. However, going through the site as they do now. Um, if you go to the grip, you go to the end of it, you just basically kept going straight, moving to the left, you go right to the solar field site.
Yeah.
How would the fire department access is 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 really the question, I mean, if they're going through. You know, the the site on Larry's Way, that's an active construction site always and may not always be clear, so that's. Uh, I'm I'm kinda concerned that this might be blocking off some of the access to Sullivan site.
We've never had an access issue.
No, I think.
And they have a constant string of trailer trucks going in and out of there all the time.
Okay.
I will say that Larry is adamant about his roadways remaining open.
Yeah.
And it's very strict with his talents about. That is a big safety issue with him, um, and he is very strict.
Being strict is one thing, but getting it in a plan and and. Fortified that way, this is different, but.
Yeah. So. I always think John gets that before we uh. Um. Now, the fact that they removed the lot. Lot D, I'm not, so you emailed me about, well, contacting the property owner.
Yeah, that, they.
For uses on, thing like that.
Since he has removed that lot.
Takes it off the table.
Yeah, that, it was the accessory used on the same lot, it's a principal use which resolved the problem.
Okay.
I believe that addresses all of Mike's comments.
Yeah.
As well as Kurt's comments, he did send an all clear email on that as well the other day.
That is correct.
I uh, keep this.
Yes, sir. Well, I can't remember that one, I was sorry.
So, so the cul-de-sac or. It's the paper. So, but I mean, this, the submission, but it's never going to be executed.
Correct. Yeah, and that's been the intent from the start.
Yeah.
Um, when I went to Kurt with this project, I proposed it just with the lot lines that are current.
Yeah.
Um, we looked at it, he really suggested doing this, this particular design is how he showed me to do it. Um, in giving each use its own land, right? Um, so that was the goal from the start with this, um, versus making it even muddier than it is.
Yeah, it it, it's another use that was on this. Property of one of the lots up there, the plan board will have the ability to say, okay, now you got too much going on, we want to see a real cul-de-sac, you know? But you'll have an opportunity to speak on it. Again, if something else was proposed over there.
Right.
I don't think it has room for anything else over there.
I'm sure that it doesn't there.
They'll find her, yeah.
Yeah, right, maybe.
Yeah. Alright, any other comments and questions from the board?
So I I was just gonna say, Ross, I don't have the plans in front of me and I don't have the changes in front of me.
Okay.
So I'm I'm not sure I can, I can vote on this or or if I want to, I just don't, I I don't see it right now.
You did have the plans, you don't have the plans from the last meeting or?
Um, I I thought something had changed.
The only thing that they did is they removed the lot line on lot, um.
Yeah, it's down here, Route twenty.
It's lot D gone, the one when you first come to the property off Route twenty, to the immediate left. We were gonna, all the interconnectivity and stuff. They're uh, taking that off the uh.
Everything will be on one lot.
Yeah.
That lot line will be renewed.
But yeah.
Okay.
That's on drawing from August twenty two, right?
Yes, August thirty.
On, yeah.
Okay.
So that was way back.
Do you feel comfortable with that, Don?
Yeah, that's, that's fine, that's fine for subdivision, for sure.
Yeah, okay, alright, do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing on Larry's Way, Route twenty, Griffin, and Sullivan.
Alright, all those in favor?
King Vince and I.
Phil Fontaine and I.
John Smith, I.
Don Clay, I.
Ross, Nancy, I. Alright, um, in Kurt's email, he. He mentioned in the last paragraph, uh, the plan board should include a condition for all proposed subdivisions and site plan approval. Any changes to the subject property we brought before the planning board to review and determination. If it's a minor field change with a mitigative review or endangerment, the case will require a new hearing. But site plan review and approval and of course, the section two hundred and seventy point one, we're just making a recommendation for that. That the board consider putting that in.
With idea.
The condition.
Actually, it, for voting, I do, it's listed on the front sheet of the plan, it do. This number waivers.
Yes, they're also looking for all the waivers. Alright, waiver request.
Okay.
I have to print it out, let's.
Yeah.
If you, if you really want something a little bigger than that.
Thank you. You put the wave with high sector for driveway construction. You cross to with the entire section for existing driveway, you cross the wave for entire section for street signing. Uh, you cross to wave the entire section. For general, three drainage.
Yeah.
Water and sewer, since there are no waters, there are no. Well, being the cul-de-sac diameter of one hundred and forty-six feet.
Then based on the review of the plan and everything, uh. And this is actually, you know, basically a paper street, you know, it's. It already, it it's really. Uh. I feel comfortable when we'll grant these waivers for this project. It's only for the subdivision, the the application.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's through the chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, just a comment on that, I know it looks like there's eight waivers here, each of those waivers is like five to ten sub waivers. There's at least forty to fifty waivers that were actually.
Yeah, I, that's, I went through section by section and reviewed them, Steve, they, I didn't wanna overlook something that might be important, but. Especially given this is. Already almost fills as a road, the driveway going into the property. And uh, this.
But it's not a paved road, it's not the right width that has issues.
Well, the the paved portion up to where the cul-de-sac is, from Route twenty up the hill. Is paved, it's the portion that will go in from the end of that. Through the battery sector, that part will be addressed in the special permit process.
Okay. Yeah, just for the record.
Okay.
Other waivers.
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright.
Very conditioned, the waivers only applicable to this application, not currently other application.
That's right, only this application, you know, for somebody coming in with a future plan that.
Yeah, like you were telling us.
Yeah, it's only in it's based on, you know, the anticipated use, this is gonna be a battery storage facility. Whereas they use it for more intense use, it would drive more traffic and everything, the plan board has the opportunity to. Review that, you know, that they would have to do things such as drainage or whatever might be required.
Alright, any other discussion?
It is just whether decommissioning.
No, this is just the subdivision or? Anything else? Alright, you have a motion to approve the uh. Subdivision plan for Larry's Way. With um. The waiver request for the eight items identified on the front page of the plan. As well as um. The uh. The condition that Kurt. Yeah. Put in email, any changes to the subject property. For review and determination if it's a minor function.
Yeah, if any, any. Future, there will be, there'll be a condition that they will have to come back before the board.
That's cool.
I make a motion to approve. Um. Subdivision plan with the uh. With the attached waiver. And with Kurt's language. Uh, the. As stated in the uh. The S proposal, that uh, battery energy storage system proposal that the applicant and landlord be aware of. That it's conditioned, as to its language. And to. Um. Estimation that this. Waiver is only permitted for this subdivision plan, not for any other use as discussed.
Alright, is there a second?
I second that.
All those in favor?
King Vince and I.
Phil Fontaine and I.
John Smith, I.
Don Clay, I.
Ross, Nancy, I. Alright, next up, we have a continued public hearing for ZP, Barry, Devol, the company, LC, special permit application to construct free energy storage systems. Uh, AKA Larry's Way, Stone Drive, Griffin Road, lot twenty-seven, block C, lot twenty-three. And the applicant looking to for an extension through March fifteenth?
Uh, for this one, yeah, please, um, I would like to just put this plan into the other plan and get everything straight for you guys and no questions.
Perfect. With the decision we heard on March fifteenth.
March fifteenth, then it would be seven twenty? Based upon uh.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, we do have it, oh, okay, yes.
Get bumped up.
Okay.
Alright, you have a motion to approve, to extend this public hearing for the special permit for the battery, battery energy storage system. And Larry's Way, in Griffin Road, to March fifteenth at seven twenty.
Don.
Second that.
All those in favor?
King Vince and I.
Phil Fontaine, I.
Don Clay, I.
Ross, Nancy, I, alright, thank you guys very much.
Thank you all.
I like that. Alright, next up, we got some uh, we gotta ratify some approval that requires, these were uh, since we didn't have a meeting last week, it wasn't even up on the agenda. And Randy has the authority to sign off on the A and R. We just need to ratify these. Okay, you got the L Stevens one, Oxford Road, East Ford Road, and then North Spirit Road.
Yeah. He's like, after himself, or just um. Find the paper property.
Alright. He's on L Stevens Road, but east and LST. Alright, purpose of the, purpose of this plan to create parcel seven. Is right here, Route twenty is right here. Yep, it, it's the, I think, then we did, then, we did a zoning change at the last town meeting for this area of Stevens, right, Randy?
I'm sorry.
Did we do a zoning change?
Yes, now uh, village, I did. That property is now in the village.
Right, it's the village that's, you know, we're in, minimum area, ten thousand square feet, which is forty-eight thousand four hundred fifty-five square feet. Hundred sixty feet of frontage, the plot has.
So what we trading up the line there, running behind um.
Hmm, let me check it out, I don't, if it's still in it. That's just the zoning lot line between community business and village. What they're creating, they broke it off of this one.
Yeah, um, we're talking about this line right here.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the line that basically falls along Route twenty, will allow community, uh, business. Businesses to be built along Route twenty. And then, you know. Theory behind it, we use the residential for the both. At one point, whenever that was done, they kinda picked this hypothetical line. Two hundred feet back or whatever it is from Route twenty, they, okay, you build all your commercial stuff along here. We've been looking at that, well, Kurt messaged and I about trying to follow property lines, just. I don't know if you remembered that, we ran into that with Jackson Motors, that problem.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's other properties such as this that have the same problem, so. We've got it, you know, we'd rather get it cleanest to a property owner. You know, this, right, not have it cut up like that.
Is this gonna be a residential one?
It it's village, so.
Okay.
I think he's intended to have residential on it, but.
Thank God. Well, the the crop fits here.
Yeah. Remember this one, the the one that came, I think you're right. That was uh, it was uh, who's, who blocks to the, kind of the. It didn't also, they were connecting there.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, we have a motion to approve the A and R. Create parcel seven, I was east and L.
Yeah. Well, we started it already, right, Randy signed up?
Yeah, we did ratify it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All those in favor? Boy, sorry, do you have a motion to approve?
Most want to approve, uh, east end, L C, nine, north Main Street, and A and R, this cycle.
All those in favor?
I. Dean, I.
Phil Fontaine, I. John Smith, I.
Don Clay, Epstein.
Ross, yeah. What was changed?
Think your plan is that six block, up in an actual road, what they actually doing is uh, three lots to be merged into one lot.
Okay.
So they they're that's all they're doing is taking three lots and merging them all into one lot. Their lot lines, this already exists, it is take, remove these inner lot lines.
Okay.
All right.
It's very full.
Yeah. All right. Do you have a motion to approve the A and R on Ox School Road?
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Phil Fontaine, I. John Smith, I.
Don Clay, Epstein.
Ross, yeah. East Ford Road, Randy.
There. Eastwood Road that I actually didn't know even existed, and then was unsure there was actually a public road, we checked with the highway department and they're creating this new one here, that is Eastwood Road, and bottom line, it's Drescher Hill Road.
Correct.
It does actually exist, and it is actually a public road.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. That's a good one, I think.
Yeah, it's a lot bigger than the other. All right, do you have a motion to approve the A and R on East Ford Road?
The move.
Are all those in favor?
Dean Vincent.
Phil Fontaine, I. John Smith, I.
Don Clay, Epstein.
Ross, yeah. So, we got North Turridge Road, and all.
You can afford what we're on, and giving to the next door neighbor, including the payment number, like it is looking for one lot and giving it to these neighbor in the property. This lot exists, and they're making fortune this lot, and these fell and they're giving to the neighbor.
This is right next to, um, oh, okay. Yes. Not that. Process.
Exactly, yep. You'll find.
Oh, she told about that.
Yeah, you.
It's the house up there, it's one, you know, it's one. Okay, back. Do you have a motion to approve the A and R on North Turridge Road?
Second.
Right, all those in favor?
Dean Vincent and I.
Phil Fontaine and I. John Smith, I.
Don Clay, Epstein.
Ross, yeah.
What's that?
All right, next up, we have the review of the twenty twenty-two annual town report for the planning board.
So guys, I, if I'm not needed, I think I'm gonna sign off. I don't think there's anything else I can help with tonight.
Yeah, thanks, Don.
Thank you, Don.
All right, guys. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Do you need to approve this or anything, we form a vote on this or no? This is just review and that's it, just, just been.
Yeah, just you reviewed that report that we submitted to the board to select them.
Yeah, for the uh, for the book, for the book, yeah, all right, good. Yeah, it looks good.
Can't say we don't have anything to do.
Yeah. Did we get that FEMA map yet?
The what?
The FEMA map. Does that come in yet or no?
No, we haven't received it yet, we're never receiving it soon.
Okay, gotcha, all right. And then, um.
I mean, actually, our next meeting is when we're gonna have the public hearing.
Yeah, I know.
Amendment by, they're actually really simple, really quick. We have to, we're doing the offer, uh, math. You see, Matt, you just, uh, proposed by law, which is already gone through the attorney general and approved, so just basically did a lot of cut and paste and
Yep.
you know, took out what we did need and put in what we did need and
Perfect.
It was, it was actually pretty straightforward, so.
Uh, where, where are we with our complete street, Randy, are we still, let's face it, I mean, I know you did, there'd be a teller.
I would like.
The complete streets?
The complete streets program or?
No, we're actually, um right now, we, we had hired mcFlure Engineering.
Yeah.
We're, we're, um, the first section we're doing is the cross speed on the library side.
Nice.
We're gonna be, uh, repairing existing, replacing existing sidewalks all the way down to Masonic Hill and around the corner, and then we're trying to see how far we can stretch the money that on the other side of McCon.
Containment. Containment.
Well, it, Amazon gave us like a million and a half dollars for the construction work, we're trying to use our complete streets money for the engineering work, so mcFlure Engineering had a lot of the information, they did all the water line replacements, so it was kind of easy for them to do, so we're trying to work our way down to Masonic Hill to Route twenty, and then we're gonna, we actually do not Main Street, that's the north main, out to, you know, as far as we can get, this, we actually have um, a proposed multi-family development on that corner of North Main, now Stevens, which he's gonna be putting in a chunk of sidewalk for us, so which will help.
You know, I, I see the people walk, it'd be nice to get something up by the old fire department, up by H Putnam, I think, into the trolley crossing there.
Yep.
There's a lot of the, uh, people out of the, um, the, oh, look, yeah, they walk, that poor guy with the, the
Yeah.
He's over there walking.
Yeah, but he actually just had a meeting and we were discussing that yesterday about, you know, H Putnam and trolley crossing, because we definitely want to have a sidewalk connection to this. I mean, the people on Masonic Hill really use those sidewalks a lot, so.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great loop for, for activity, and it's, and it's pretty high in the church and you can tell.
Right, so we're.
The tank park.
Uh, that's, that's gonna be, we're trying to get this first base done.
Yep.
And then get, get that whole thing done up through Masonic. Up to, to Masonic Home, basically, anything you need done, and then from after the Masonic Home, we they get that sidebar that's going diagonally across that Masonic Hill Road, and it's not supposed to, it's supposed to be at a, you know, right angle and all that, so we want to fix that problem as well, just to make it safer, nothing else, so the idea, ideas, get it all the way down to Route twenty, perfect, right?
Thank you. Please. All right, do they have anything else? All right, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
My second.
All those in favor?
Dean Vincent and I.
Phil Fontaine, I. John Smith, I.
Ross, yeah.